It's nine AM and I will call to order the December twenty second, twenty twenty meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Shadwick?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Here.
Mr. Wees?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Okay, I ask that you please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I would ask that Brad Bowers, our IT Director, please explain to the public on how to raise their hand if it's not visible on the screen and so forth to be able to speak today. So Brad, could you give them a quick rundown on how that process works, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. If you have the Zoom client installed on your PC, if you select the Participants tab in that client at the right, at the right-hand side of the screen, you should see a panel that will allow you to raise your hand. And that's what we're looking for when constituents want to speak in the meeting.
All right. Thank you. And at this time, I would ask if there are any citizens who wish to speak on county government, limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. So is there anyone who wishes to raise their hand, please?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one person that has raised their hand. I'm going to ask Mr. Brown to unmute at this time.
Good morning. Hello, Chairman Vidrickson and Celine County Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Eric Brown. I am coming to you today to give you an update on the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce Foundation grant program that you all allowed us to be involved with and get out to the businesses here in Celine County. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update of where we're at with that and let you know how beneficial it was to these businesses in Celine County. Some quick numbers for you all. Sorry, pulled them up here. As you remember, we had two million six hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents that the committee gave to us to grant out. We started that process in October the thirty-first. From that, we received a hundred and ninety-one applications. We approved a hundred and sixty-three of those applications. Nineteen of those applications were deemed ineligible based on the guidelines, whether it was from the federal government side or from our grant-specific guidelines themselves. And we were able to grant out all those dollars. So a hundred and sixty-three applications that were approved, breaking that down, the average grant amount was sixteen thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. That represented about seven hundred and eighty-two employees across those one hundred and sixty-three businesses, or about four point seven-nine employees per business. And out of all of the applications, the one ninety-one, eighty-nine, or forty-six point five-nine percent indicated they were minority or women-owned. So those are, I think, some pretty good numbers that I wanted to share with you all. And also, thank you for putting your trust in the chamber and the Chamber Foundation to put this program together and help the community.
All right. Thank you, Eric. And from the commission's standpoint, we wish to thank the chamber for their participation. You did a Yoma's job. We appreciate it. As you know, the Governor's Office put this on the county to do, I think it was forty-five days that we had to do that or something to that effect. And with everything that was going on, it was impossible to get that done by ourselves. And our administrator recognized that and put together, you know, a plan to ask the chamber for help. And that seemed to be well-received. So thank you and your staff for your participation in helping us out there. So, thank you.
Thank you again, Chairman. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. We'll move on to regular business. Today's consent agenda, which consists of approval of accounts payable and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or do anything with the agenda today? Hearing none, the agenda will stand approved. We will move into our presentations and our RFA action items. Item number one, RFA two-seven-zero-dash-two-zero lease agreement for county vehicles. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, members of the public. Last Tuesday, staff presented to the Commission a proposal to shift the way that we have acquired vehicles for county use in the past by moving to a lease arrangement with Enterprise Fleet Management. Commissioners had a number of questions about that program and ultimately decided to table that action until today's meeting. We did meet yesterday with Commissioners in special session to answer additional questions. And I'm not sure that there's a lot more I have to say today, but I am available to answer any final questions. And Brandon Scott from Enterprise is on the line as well.
Okay. Are there any commissioners who wish to comment or have questions based on our conversations last week and yesterday? I will have a couple of questions myself that I haven't been able to come up with here for either Phil or Brandon. And that is, define the length of the lease to me. I mean, is this one year, two years, five years? I haven't been able to put my finger on that.
The length of the leases will vary based on the vehicles procured. So you're leasing essentially for the value of the vehicle. So the individual leases on the individual vehicles will vary, but what is presented to the Commission is the first-year implementation of what's envisioned to ultimately be about a five-year rollout of this program.
And that having been said, do we have a number that we can wrap our mind around for the cost of the second year or third year or beyond? Or how do we come up with that number?
Brandon, you want to?
Sure. Yeah, so we've developed an analysis for the county. And essentially, we anticipate, generally speaking, three percent inflation each year. That's generally what the inflation rate of vehicles is each year. So we anticipate that. At the same token, we also anticipate approximately three percent more in resale each year. So proportionately, it goes up each year from acquisition price and resale as well.
Okay, well, this first year cost of a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twelve, that includes our trade-ins, which helps that number come down, I assume. So, I mean, can you give me a best guesstimate for year two?
Yeah, so it kind of depends on if we have more vehicles that are entered into the agreement next year and what that quantity looks like. So if we, you know, start with the twenty-two recommended in the white fleet, we anticipate that, hey, next year, those twenty-one vehicles may grow to twenty-six vehicles at that point. So we would anticipate similar costs proportionately moving forward. So, yeah, in the first year, yeah, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. But again, you're going to have a large offset from reimbursement savings. You're also going to have a large offset from vehicles to be sold in the first year as well.
So the second year leased then would be significantly higher because we won't have that offset of trade-in vehicles. Is that correct?
Actually, no. So that's a good question. Because a lot of these vehicles, we've got nineteen vehicles scheduled to be on a one-year cycle. So we'll actually have a large influx of equity coming back to the county after the first year. And so in the pricing that I have to fill, we have those projections in there. So, yeah, we anticipate approximately a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to be injected after the first year back into the county's budget. Once we cycle out nineteen vehicles, insert those funds back into the county.
But that hundred and twelve thousand, I mean, where does that, the hundred and forty-six thousand that you have for first year cost?
And? Yeah, so we have, yeah, a hundred and forty-six thousand, the amount between the resale and reimbursement savings, we're looking at approximately a hundred and eight thousand dollars across all departments from the resale of vehicles plus reimbursement savings.
I guess somebody's going to have to help me out then for, I'm not understanding, the hundred and forty-six thousand is what the cost is according to this to the county, period, right? That includes the trade-in values?
That's before the trade-in values.
That's before? Okay, well, I don't read that this way. So that does explain a little bit to me. So, all right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, Brad, are there, is there any members of the public that wish to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, I do see a hand raised. I will ask Mr. Holm to unmute.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. And my name is Tim Holm. I'm the owner of Holm Dewick GMC in town. I purchased the dealership from Ralph Bennett. And I just was made aware of the proposition that Enterprise has presented to the county. And I commend them for being proactive and offering for the county some simplicity and some newer vehicles. But I really have to say, even just listening to this presentation from Mr. Scott, it seems to me like there's a lot of open-ended questions, I guess, that I would have about it. Because there's, while you have the value of the first year, you don't really know what the values of the second year are, and you're changing. And I'm not trying to refute Mr. Scott. I'm just trying to understand it. You're betting on some equity on the vehicles, and we really don't know for sure if you'll have the equity or not, because that's not a guaranteed number. That's based on the market, just like the stock market can be up and can be down. Vehicles are very much a commodity. So I would assume that Mr. Scott is correct, but we really don't know for sure. And so my question to the Commissioners is, if you could get a similar lease program put together by a local dealer, whether it's us or one of the other new car dealers in town, would you be open to listen to a presentation? Because I do know that we have the ability to provide municipal leases for municipalities and for governmental units. I haven't done one yet to this extent, but we do have that ability. And not having much time to prepare for this, I can't give you any options, but I know that we could give you some options at some point in time. And there would be a lot more clarity. I mean, because we would have hard numbers to work with as opposed to kind of what I think might happen, which, not trying to refute Mr. Scott, but it appears to me like if a lot of this is based on equity, that's not a guaranteed number. And that could change radically over the time of, you know, this process that it's going through. So that's the only thing I would offer up. I see you have three actions to take, either to accept the proposition, continue in the vein that you've been doing, purchasing the vehicles, or delay action. We would be more than happy to present some figures for the county if I had a chance to visit with Mr. Smith Haynes. I know you're kind of quite a ways down the road on this, but if we had a little bit of forewarning and had the opportunity to gather some facts and some information, we might have been able to provide an alternate option for the county to consider. And that alternate option would be with the local businesses. They could use the support, whether it's us or any of the other dealers in town. And that's what I have to offer, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holm. We appreciate that. And all the things that all the car dealers here in town do for the community. So at this time, I would ask if there are any other questions or comments after his comments from commissioners. If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
To the county administrator, what does delaying this look like? What are the, we're probably going to miss out on some end-of-the-year deals, but other than that, Mr. Holm's comments make a little sense to me. And what are the options? Or what are consequences of delaying?
Other than the end-of-year deadlines, particularly for the GM products, there's no real risk in delaying this.
And my motion might not get a second, so it might be a moot point. But would you like, if I made a motion to delay, would you, I mean, is a month enough time? Is it too much time? What are your thoughts on that? Or do I just, is a motion just to delay it to a later time?
I guess it would be, I would be curious about the purpose of the delay and some specificity for staff. So if there were a direction from the Commission where you wanted us to go sort of shop this around to the local dealers, I would think we would probably be looking at a minimum of two months to get that done realistically, just in terms of bid processes and time to put something together. And but if that's not what you're seeking, then that answer changes.
Monty, before we go any further, I want, Phil, we, this is a parliamentary problem issue. We have not untabled this from our last meeting. Does that need to be done? Or how do we proceed on that? Because this item, this RFA was tabled a week ago.
Yeah, so technically, yeah, you should have a motion to take it off the table. And then, but Commissions don't necessarily run by formal Roberts Rules of Order in some respects. For example, you shouldn't debate anything unless you have a motion on the table under Roberts Rules of Order. And I've never seen a Commission adhere to that. So, you know.
Well, my thought is that we really haven't debated it. We've asked some questions, I guess, if you look at that. I think it would be maybe proper to get this off the table and then come back into the motion, because we haven't received a motion yet. Would that be reasonable?
Certainly.
Okay, I'll ask for that motion then.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt real quick?
You may.
Two hands, two additional hands raised that would like to speak if you will entertain that.
Speak on, do they, they don't say what they want to speak on, though?
They just have their hands raised.
Hold on for a second. I want to get this off the table and get it reopened back up, and then we will take those calls.
Okay.
Mr. Scott, I do make that motion to table.
Okay, is there, and I'll second that for, to get it done real quickly. Been made a motion in a second that we take off last week's tabled agenda item and remove it from the table and to be discussed again. And all of those in favor, please say aye. Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
And Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
And Mr. Vidrickson is aye, so that's five-zero. And now we'll put this item back before us. And Brad, I will take the calls, assuming that they're pertaining to this item.
Okay, Mr. Holm, I am asking you to unmute at this time.
Thank you. I was just going to mention that I don't know what the timeline would be, but I certainly think that two months would be adequate time, if not maybe sooner than that, that we could make a appropriate response for the county's benefit.
All right. Thank you. And is there someone else, Brad?
One additional. Mr. Scott, I am asking you to unmute at this time.
Thank you, sir. The only other point I wanted to make in terms of the timeline is we do anticipate GM to stop taking orders, factory order perspective. So sending the order directly to Detroit for vehicles to be spec-equipped and built, is that exactly how the department heads have requested? We anticipate that to be the end of the calendar year. It's a fluid timeline, but we anticipate that GM will no longer take factory orders beyond that. Could be, give or take, you know, a little bit of time, a week or a couple of weeks on that, but from the timeline perspective.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to the Commission then. And again, I will go back and ask for some sort of a motion pertaining to this item.
I think Jim wants to speak.
Go ahead.
Thank you. A couple of questions, these comments from the public that brought to mind. If you enter into an agreement with one party as far as the lease purchase or whatever the program is called, and find something that is more suitable with another vendor, how did that impact, I mean, you don't want to be shopping every year for a new lease agreement, but how would that impact it if something better comes along? And secondly, a question for Mr. Holm is, it seems like you're saying that you can guarantee buyback on the vehicles versus Mr. Scott, who says that his projections show they will be this way. I'm a little hesitant that if you guarantee something, you're looking at, to be rather conservative, just to protect the business side of it. If those questions could be answered, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I tell you, I think we're getting into, I don't want to get into a debate between, you know, the different vendors. We're really discussing this RFA. I mean, I don't know how to approach that, Phil. And I don't mean to cut you off, Jim, either, but go ahead, Phil. Do you have a comment?
So to answer Commissioner Wees's first question, the, we're not locked into the lease arrangement for a fixed period of time. There would be individual leases on individual vehicles subject to this master agreement. So the master agreement continues until we decide to terminate it. But the actual, you know, if we found, just hypothetically, if we found that budget rent-to-car was offering a better deal on GMs than Enterprise was, there's nothing that would prevent us from having a subset of vehicles leased from a different vendor. As to the second part of the question, I will defer to the chair, but I think those are the kinds of things that we would need to sort out over a period of time, you know, make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, if that's the direction the Commission wants to go.
And that is my concern, that we debate that at this time. I mean, I think it'd be better served if we think that that is a debatable item, then we should not move forward, and we should go back to the drawing board, if indeed that is the case, if the Commission feels that way. For us and the administration and Enterprise and Holm Motor Company, Holm Automotive, to get into a debate at this state at this time is probably not the thing that we should be looking at. That's my opinion. If other Commissioners wish to object to that, I'm open to that also. Jim, did you want to go forward with your questions to Tim?
No, I'll speed my questions to the Commissioners and to the Administrator.
Okay. All right, this time, then, I'll go back. And Commissioner Shadwick, I know that you had a motion in mind, but?
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
I'm doing that right now.
I move that we enter into an agreement with Enterprise and authorize the county administrator to sign the lease.
And is there a second to that motion? It appears that that motion will die for a lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to, first of all, say that I do believe in the leasing program. I think that that's the way to go. And I appreciate staff thinking outside the box. That being said, though, my motion is to delay a decision and challenge staff to seek alternative bids or alternative methods to get to this point. And I will not make a timeframe on that. Just do it as quickly as possible.
And is there a second to that motion?
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we delay the bid process and challenge, I'm paraphrasing, Monty, so if I get something incorrect, paraphrasing, that we instruct staff to seek alternative bids for the leasing program. Is that close enough to what you said, Monty?
It's better than what I said.
I doubt that. All right. Are there any other questions from Commissioners? All of those in favor of the motion that is on the table, please say aye, and I will call the roll here. Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Nay.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. So that motion will carry four to one. So we will move forward in that direction. Thank everyone for participating. And Brandon, I know you've done a lot of work on this, so thank you, too. And obviously, we're not done with it. So thank you. We will move forward to item number two, RFA two-seven-three-dash-two-zero Rural Fire District number six, the Dane Hansen Grant with Michelle Barkley, Director of Emergency Management. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commission. I'm here on behalf of RFD six to ask for the acceptance of a thousand-dollar Dane Hansen Grant that they were awarded to assist in the replacement of the fire pump that they have. The fire pump is part of a fire sprinkler system. And this is basically connected to a water tank, which then can be loaned out to any Celine County resident that needs a water supply close by when they're doing a controlled burn. It should be noted that the entire fire pump replacement is five thousand dollars. So Rural Fire District six will be paying four thousand dollars out of their special equipment fund. Staff is asked Um, staff is asking that we approve the acceptance of the grant so we can help assist those that are doing controlled burning by providing this water source to them.
All right, are there any questions, uh, from, for Michelle, from the commissioners, any comments? If not, I will ask for, for a motion. What, did you want something, Jim? I'm sorry. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve RFA two seven three dash twenty, as presented by staff.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two seven three dash two zero, rural fire district number six, Dane Hanson Grant. Uh, any other comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidriksen is aye. That motion does carry five zero. We'll move to item number three, which is, uh, RFA two seven four dash two zero and resolution twenty dash twenty three twenty, appointing members of rural fire, uh, number one, number two, number three, number five, number six, and number seven to the Board of Trustees, again with Michelle Barkley, Director from Emergency Management. And, uh, the floor is yours, Michelle.
Good morning again. I'm here to, uh, request approval of the attached resolution to reappoint board members to the Board of Trustees for the rural fire districts one, two, three, five, six, and seven. The Board of Trustees of each fire district oversee the operations, um, on behalf of the County Commission. Each district is allowed to appoint five to nine members on their Board of Trustees, and these board members' terms will last for three years, meaning that these members appointed today, if approved, will be up for reappointment, um, in two thousand and twenty four. Um, it should be noted that all of these board members, um, have served before, and none of them are new appointments. Would you like me to read the names of those being appointed?
Uh, that's not necessary, we've, unless you think we should, Phil, but, uh, I mean, all the commissioners and the public information is available to everyone to see the names. Uh, I would ask, Michelle, uh, do they have such a thing as term limits on, on these board appointments, or they can serve indefinitely?
As long as they get reappointed every three, three years, they can continue to serve.
And as far as the, the appointments go, I mean, they propose their own, uh, people to come onto the board. I mean, the, the fire district itself proposes the, uh,
They solicit people that are interested.
All right, okay. Uh, are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I'll ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I approve, I move we approve RFA two seven four dash twenty and resolution twenty dash twenty three twenty, appointing members of, to the rural fire districts as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two seven four dash two zero and resolution twenty, number twenty, twenty three twenty, appointing members of rural fire districts. Uh, all of those in favor of the motion will say aye. Uh, Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidriksen is aye. That is five zero, that motion carries. All right, thank you, Michelle, for getting all that put together. Uh, we'll move to item number four, which is RFA two seven five dash two zero and resolution two zero dash twenty three seventeen, with a resolution establishing meeting dates, times for the Board of Commissioners for twenty twenty one. And I will go to our administrator, Philip Smith Haynes.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, members of the commissions, so, uh, this is the resolution that is required now under, um, KSA nineteen dash two zero six to fix meeting dates and times. The proposed resolution, um, keeps with the typical schedule of every Tuesday at nine AM with the exception of the week of the KAC Annual Conference in October. And, um, of course, special meetings, uh, can be held when the chairman deems those necessary, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve RFA twenty seven, or two seven five dash twenty and resolution twenty dash twenty three seventeen, excuse me, as presented by staff.
Is there a second?
Second the motion, Mike White.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two seven five dash two zero and resolution twenty dash twenty three seventeen, resolution establishing meeting dates and times for the Board of Commissioners, of County Commissioners for twenty twenty one. And I'll call for the roll call. Um, Monty Shadwick?
Aye.
Uh, Mike White?
Aye.
Roger Sparks?
Aye.
Jim Wees?
Aye.
And Robert Vidriksen is aye. That motion carries five zero, thank you. We'll move to, uh, item number five. Resolution RFA two seven six dash two zero and resolution twenty dash twenty three eighteen, resolution authorizing the transfer of certain funds from the twenty twenty budget, again with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again. This is what I would term an annual end of year cleanup item. This authorizes the transfer of unspent funds at the time, uh, that we finalize the audit, typically next spring, um, from our operating budgets to our capital budgets. Um, allows the county to continue to build, uh, savings in those capital budgets, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions or comments from commissioners? I should ask, uh, Brad, are there any, uh, members of the public that wish to speak to this, with this RFA?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand indicating they would like to speak.
Thank you. I will bring it back to the commission for action then, please.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve RFA two seven six dash twenty and resolution twenty dash twenty three eighteen, eighteen, authorizing the transfer of certain funds in the two thousand and twenty budget as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded are, uh, for RFA two seven six dash two zero and resolution twenty dash twenty three eighteen, resolution authorizing the transfer of certain funds from the twenty twenty budget. Are further comments? Brad, is there anyone from the public has raised their hands on this one? Or have already asked that on this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Uh, Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
That motion does carry five zero. Uh, item number six, RFA two seven seven dash two zero and resolution twenty dash twenty three nineteen, exempting Celine County, Kansas from the provisions of KSA seventy five dash eleven twenty eight. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
And good morning again. This item is another audit related item. Um, a little bit esoteric, but state law generally requires that financial statements of cities and counties be prepared on the basis of generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP. The state of Kansas does offer an alternative, which is the Kansas Municipal Auditing and Accounting Guide, or K-MAG. Most, uh, cities and counties in the state do, uh, seek the alternative of K-MAG. Celine County has done that for a number of years, and this resolution is required annually. I'd be happy to answer more detailed questions.
Questions from commissioners? Comments? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this RFA?
Mr. Com- Mr. Chairman, I do not see anyone with their hand raised indicating they'd like to speak.
All right, I will accept a motion from the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If I may, uh, Phil, question for you. This is kinda like the end of the year house cleaning project again.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm right, my assumption, thank you.
You're correct.
All right, I'll ask for a motion then, please.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve RFA two seven seven dash twenty and resolution twenty dash twenty three nineteen, exempting Celine County, Kansas from the provisions, um, as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded that we approve RFA two seventy seven dash twenty and resolution twenty dash twenty three nineteen, exempting Celine County, Kansas from the provisions of KSA seventy five dash eleven twenty eight. Are there further comments? If not, call for the vote. Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidriksen is aye. That is, that motion does carry five zero. Thank you. Uh, we'll move to item number seven, uh, review of amendment number one to resolution twenty dash twenty two ninety seven. Review of section six of the mask mandate with Jason Tiller from our, is our Health Department Director. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, Brad, I'll pull up the slides. All right, here we go. So this is our bi-weekly update. Next slide, please. So in the national picture, we've still seen over three million new cases in the last fourteen days and thirty five thousand deaths, um, nationwide. Go to the next slide, please, for the state. Uh, statewide, we're still at, um, we're now two hundred and four thousand, six hundred cases in the state. That's an additional thirty thousand since, uh, two weeks ago. Um, but we've also had an additional fifty four thousand negative tests in that same time period. Next slide. Uh, here in the county, we are currently at three thousand seven hundred and forty nine cases, uh, over twenty two hundred recovered. We've got about fourteen, almost fifteen hundred active ones, and in the last two weeks, we have had, uh, thirteen additional deaths. Um, in that twenty four hours after our last update two weeks ago, um, we had eight during that period. Um, within that twenty four hours, and then, um, thankfully, though, the, uh, number of deaths has tapered off, um, since then, um, I will be happy when we can, uh, be able to report again that, you know, we have had no new deaths within, um, the reporting periods. Um, currently, the hospital has forty two inpatient, um, additional from KDHE. Uh, Celine County has had so far thirteen thousand, almost fourteen thousand people tested, uh, almost ten thousand negative results, and our monthly positive rate is, uh, at thirteen point eight, which is down from, uh, seventeen percent that it was last time. One thing I wanna say that was interesting, as I was putting this together, for the last couple of updates, um, those two week increments, we've seen, although the numbers, of course, have gone up, but we've seen a steady increase in those numbers, meaning that from that, uh, one report to the next, the amount of cases was higher than that two weeks before, um, where it might have been two million in the, the two week, uh, period prior, then it was close to three million the next week, a little bit more, you know, the next, uh, reporting period. In this one, though, the interesting, um, trend that seemed to kinda come out is that the uh, two week increase was, um, from the seventh until yesterday, was actually, um, a little bit lower, national, state, and countywide. Now, is that because we are, you know, the, of all the increased testing and all of the increased, um, communications that are out there and increased mask mandates? Um, is it because it's getting closer to Christmas and people just, you know, don't wanna be, uh, quarantined over Christmas? Um, I'm not exactly sure, and I will have to wait, uh, you know, another couple of reporting periods to see if that trend stays kind of looking downward, or if it goes back up, or what it does. But it was just an interesting note that across the national, state, and local levels, um, that the, uh, totals were actually showing a little bit of a, a downward, um, trend in that. So if we'll go to the next slide, please. So our cases per month. Um, we are getting close to, we're a little over, uh, twelve hundred or so this month, um. Fingers crossed that we don't exceed November, uh, with the holidays right now. Um, but as we'll talk about shortly, there was a lot of testing this past weekend, so, and we haven't seen all the, the, uh, uh, results come in from that yet, so there still remains quite a bit to be seen as far as our, our cases, uh, coming up here pretty soon. Next slide. Again, you know, this month, we've had more deaths, uh, due to COVID nineteen than we did last month. Um, thankfully, that has slowed down in the last, uh, week, um, and hopefully, that slowing trend will continue, um, through the end of the month. Next slide. So we started, uh, breaking out the clusters by, uh, the types of places that they are. Um, some of these have actually been on the list for quite a while, cuz, uh, a cluster is considered closed when we go twenty eight days without a new, uh, case that's related to that cluster. Um, and so there have been at times where we might get to like day twenty six, twenty seven, and then another one pops up, and so it kinda starts that clock over again. Um, but we've also had quite a few that we have closed out, so with all of the, uh, the, the testing that's been going on, um, and hopefully, we can close out some more of these, uh, fairly soon. But you can see the clusters are pretty well, um, except for a long-term care where we kind of unfortunately expect to see some, and then private business, uh, they're pretty much spread across the gambit. And these categories are how KDHE, uh, uh, defines the types of, uh, clusters. So I'm using their terminology so that we stay consistent amongst our discussions as far as, you know, how many clusters there are and, and where they are at, or what types they are. Next slide. Um, so I mentioned that there were several, uh, free testing events over this past weekend. Um, reports I have gotten from the ones that were conducted through Well Health, Salina Regional, and Salina Family, that there was about fourteen hundred or so tests that were conducted. Um, keep in mind that, you know, these were open to anybody, so, um, that doesn't mean that that was fourteen hundred Celine County residents. That could be from any county around us that came through them. Um, but we should, uh, results are slowly starting to trickle in from all of those, and so I expect that later on tonight or tomorrow, that we'll see probably the bulk of those results coming in. From what I have gotten so far, is that due to holidays, uh, these testing events were also being funded by the state, um, using CRF funds, and so since those are expiring, um, there are currently no other, uh, large-scale free testing events, uh, planned in the short term, and then after the first of the year, we'll have to look at how we can try and, um, logistically and then financially be able to, you know, continue something else like that without that CRF funds being able to back it up. Next slide. The thing that probably everybody wants to know about, uh, vaccines, um, and just keep in mind that information come out about vaccines and where and when is changing, um, can change and is changing often. Uh, Pfizer was out last week to the hospitals. Uh, Moderna has been approved and has started to be pushed out to, uh, local health departments for EMS, public health staff, um, and other healthcare workers, um, and as such, we'll be coordinating with, between ourselves, Salina Family, Salina Regional, um, with extra doses to help cover those workers, um, at other healthcare entities um, that were not directly identified in the, the state's initial push, and we'll be reaching out to them, um, to coordinate those efforts. The, um, Moderna vaccine doesn't have to be kept ultra cold like the Pfizer one. Um, however, it, it still has a few complexities, um, that it is kept frozen. It has to thaw at a certain rate over a certain time. It has to thaw at a certain rate over a certain time. Um, once you puncture the seal on that that vial, you have to be ready to give ten of them, because it's only good for a few hours after it's thawed and punctured. Um, so there'll be some additional coordination as we work with uh, EMS and and uh, other healthcare providers to uh, uh, get other healthcare workers uh, vaccinated that weren't previously identified um, in the state's plan. Next slide. And of course, this is, uh, you may have seen this last week um, at the one of the governor's press conferences. This is their most current draft of expected vaccine availability um, due to population groups. Um, the one thing I did add is just so that uh, everybody can see, um, long-term care facilities and residents. Um, there has been coordination, and they should be receiving all of their vaccine through the National Pharmacy Program. Um, I think I mentioned a little bit about that last week. Um, and so they are are already prepared, and I believe supposed to be getting theirs next week for those facilities. Um, and then you can see how they have broken down uh, other population groups. Um, and I expect that, like many things so far, you know, that this will probably change a few times. Um, as we get more information and through our press releases and other avenues, we'll try and and update the public um, with what information we get. Just keeping in mind that quite often um, local health departments are getting the information at the same time as everybody else does when the uh, press conferences are conducted, so. Next slide. So it's hard to believe with almost sixty degrees today that Christmas is this week. Um, I know that, you know, a lot of people are still going to uh, you know, try and have family gatherings and things like that, but um, really, you know, we need your help to stop the spread, uh, wear your masks, social distance, wash your hands, um, especially avoid large groups. Um, just remember that there is a uh, mask gathering um, restriction. Um, and really, we just want people to, we know that, you know, they're going to have holiday. We just want them to have a safe holiday. And not end up with uh, unintentionally giving uh, COVID to all of their families as Christmas presents. Next slide. So just a reminder that, you know, continuing the mask order because it works when everybody does their part, and that we need to continue to be vigilant and act like uh, COVID is everywhere because it is. Uh, one additional thing that uh, Michelle uh, Barkley, the Emergency Manager, asked me to remind uh, or to add to this is that last week, we received fifteen pallets of hand sanitizer from the state. Uh, each county was given an allotment of it. Um, and so far, we have uh, gotten rid of five and a half pallets. There are still nine and a half pallets. Um, each case has seventy bottles, and they are the three to four ounce small bottles. Um, it is free to businesses, to residents, to anybody. The only stipulation is, is it cannot be sold. So if there's anybody interested um, in hand sanitizer for whatever, or if they just need more around their house, all they need to do is contact uh, Michelle Barkley at Emergency Management. She's handling the logistics of the distribution on that, and then um, they can be able to pick that up. And with that, that's all I have today, gentlemen, so I will stand for questions if you have any.
Uh, I do have one, Jason, in in regards to the vaccine. Uh, do we have any a further update uh, as far as what Celine County is getting? I know that the hospital is pretty well taking care of their entire staff, and uh, I had lab work done this morning, and the lady at the, at the at the lab said that she'd had her shot yesterday, so I just wondered what what the update is on the vaccine for Celine County.
All right, so um, the hospital received Pfizer last week. Um, and so yesterday um, we received at the Health Department two hundred doses that is for staff, for EMS, and then for those additional healthcare workers, like I mentioned earlier. Um, the FQHC Salina Family received um, I think it was maybe three or four hundred doses for staff, for their staff, and then we have to work with them to make sure that all of those other smaller healthcare agencies. Um, like other doctors' offices, um, specialty care that aren't part of hospital chain um, to coordinate to give their vaccine. Um, the vaccine yesterday um, quite honestly, showed up without any heads up or warning. Um, and so, and some of the paperwork that we were expecting, at least through uh, uh, some of the KDHE webinars that was supposed to come with it, didn't. So we've been working to draft um, a consent form and a protocol that has to get signed sometime today um, before we can start giving that.
All right, are other other commissioners have questions or comments? If not, thank you, uh, Jason, that uh, it's helpful. Keep our fingers crossed and uh, follow the guidelines. It's a, see where we can go from there.
Yes, sir, and you know, information, like I said earlier, i- it does change very quickly even from day to day on some of the stuff that we're told and that we learn. And so we're trying to not only keep up with those changes, but get information out to the public um, that's relevant to the public and not, you know, cause confusion too, as quickly as we can to make sure it's the most accurate. And so, and that is a challenge in these in these times, too.
Okay, because this was a a review of a resolution with a possible um, action on the, is there a motion for this uh, amendment, review of this amendment?
I'll I'll move that we continue with the mask mandate.
I'll second the motion.
And I'm not sure we've even needed a motion on that part of it, but we'll do that anyway. Uh, all of those in favor of the uh, motion that's on the table, and that is to take no action on the and continue the mask mandate for Celine County. And I will ask for a roll call vote. Uh, Monty Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson is aye. That carries five zero. Thank you, Jason, for your update, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, same to you. Uh, informational items, we'll move to item number one, County Administrator's update. Philip Smith Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just two items today. Um, wanted to let the commission know that we do continue working on the jail uh, uh, relocation even over the holiday season here. The sheriff's staff met with the architect yesterday afternoon and went through a number of revisions to design plans. Uh, we're scheduled to um, skip next week for our regular call, but pick that up again on uh, January sixth, and then um, have another onsite meeting uh, in January as well, so continue moving forward on that. And then I just wanted to remind uh, the public mainly, I know the commissioners are all aware, that the City County Building, the most other county facilities will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week for the Christmas holiday, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from anyone? If not, we will move on to item number two with commissioners' comments. I hear none. Item number three, announcements. I hear none. That'll move us to the adjournment part of this meeting, and with no further business to be convened, I'll ask if there's any other business that anyone wants to bring up. If not, I will declare the meeting as adjourned. Thank you for watching.